Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
With the board's permission here, I am going to move directly to adjustments, which interestingly enough, I'm not actually seeing on our agenda, but that is a customary item. And I would like to move item. Well, that would be, help me out, Chris, what's our item? That would be the timetable for completion of the audit. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, timetable for completion of the audit, audit report to be released. Yes, that's the one.
So we're going to move item three B up ahead of communication and public comment. I'm making a presumption that this is absolutely an open session item. And those who may be here for communication and public comment might wish to comment after we have that discussion. Are there any objections from the board? I'm not hearing any. So Cindy and Miranda, you're on. If you could pull the agenda now, Chris, that'd be a big help because I've lost my, thank you, members. So Cindy, Miranda, who wants to start off here?
I'm going to turn it over to Miranda for now.
Hello, good evening.
Hi, Miranda.
Um, yeah, so timetable for the audit. We are in the final stages of getting the audits into draft form. And to date, we have sent three audits, audit drafts to Chris, Teresa, and Lynn. So they should have the three audits, draft form that just needs to be verified. And if they're okay with those, they can sign off. We are still in the process of working on the other four FY19 audits. And they should be getting those audits, I would say, within the next week or two. Drafts to be reviewed by the business office and Chris before we can get your finalized audits to you.
Cindy, you have anything to add to that? Okay.
I do not. And Ron Smith has also joined us. He is the managing, whatever you are, Ron.
Thanks for coming on, Ron. Do you have any comment before I see if the board has questions?
I'm unmuting myself. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would just say it's been a long, difficult process. And we want to bring closure to it and move on to 20 as fast as you guys do. I can tell you that right now, so.
Thank you. 20 participants. Okay, questions from the board? I don't hear any questions from the board. Thank you so much for coming in. You're certainly welcome to stay if you have nobody use for your time. But I can't believe that is the situation. And we are now under communication, public comment. Chris or Lynn, I don't have a full screen. Members of the public?
I have nothing in the chat regards to members of the public.
Okay, then let's move on to old business for discussion and action. And that will start off with item A, which is to move $71,000 from the Rockingham food account into the WNESU food service account with Community Bank. The last time we met, there were questions, particularly from Rockingham members, about the accounting. And Chris, I know that we have Teresa here, so I'm going to rely on you to tell us who would like to update us. And I am aware that docs went out from Teresa earlier this afternoon. So go ahead, would you, Chris?
You know, Teresa has all the information as she is here with us on telephone. So I'm going to hand it over to her so she can give you an overview of the documents she sent out earlier. Teresa?
Yep, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So what, yes, the documents that I sent out. So the research that I did go back kind of confirmed everything that I had told you before. As far as this Rockingham account, it, because it kind of housed the original programs for food service were never done at the SU level. It was done in a district had to be. And I think somebody else kind of confirmed, said what I said is that Rockingham was sort of the house. They held it. And so Rockingham, Bellas Falls, the central schools, the Athrapp schools, they all were part of those funding. So anytime school lunch money was paid, everything went into that pot. Anytime reimbursement claims from the state for lunch and breakfast and things like that, every single time those reimbursements, everything was put back into that account. So at the end of December 31st, 2018, we rolled from ADS, the old software program. We moved those balances over to the new program. Rockingham databases, and it would, I know Cindy and them are gone now, but they should be able to confirm that through their audit too, because I also supplied all these documents to them, that this funds were part of the initial food service program as melting pot. So going back, looking at the documents and some of the ones that you'll see that I sent, that back in August of 2019, if I'm saying this right, that funds for April, May, and June claims from the prior school year of 2018 is what makes up two of those large deposits that made up the $54,000 that at the end of December, like I said, was moved. They decided to stop using TD Bank and had opened up a new bank account with Community to kind of go along with where, actually, they put it in the general fund, let me say that, when they opened up. So they stopped using this particular account. Now, what I couldn't figure out, and I finally was able to figure out again, was the $17,000 that I kept struggling with, because I knew what the reports said and when they were posted. But there was another $17,000 that came in this last year, school year, excuse me, FY19 school year that were for, again, state food service claims. And that $17,000, I don't know what reason that it was deposited into this TD Bank, because clearly we weren't even using this account at that time. It should have went straight into the normal general fund food service account at the SU level, just like everything else. So this is one of those things that's reconciling out. And again, I know the auditors are offline now. I thought I was going before them, so Miranda and them could have confirmed. But they would have had to come across this during the audit. And they should have been, and they can still be able to confirm that this money, like I said, was a melting pot. And it's, it's not specifically to Rockingham itself. If I explain that well enough.
I think you did, Teresa. I'm going to ask Priscilla, who's a Rock board member here, and I know keeps a weather eye on the numbers, if she has any questions for you, Teresa. Priscilla?
I do have a question, because my concern would be whether that, that $54,000 was a reimbursement to the general fund that needed to be done, because money came out of that to pay that from the general fund to begin with.
Can you ask that, Teresa?
Um, I feel like I'm not sure I understood 100% what you were asking. But I know that originally there were funds, like if the state sent funds, reimbursement funds, they were put into the general fund, into WNESU, you know, the SU funds. Then the SU had to turn around and write a check over to the TD Bank. So the funds were just being filtered, you know, taking the long road to get to the TD account, which is where the expenditures come out. And you can see from the bank statement, one of the very last ones where the account was really actively being used, that the balance that got left after they paid the $121,000 balance to Cafe Services, because they were the ones, and it's kind of ties into when Cafe Services was around. And when they stopped using them, that was another reason that they said, okay, we're bringing the whole program into the SU level. And we're going to house it ourselves. So the point was, at one point, at one point, it was decided that these accounts were going to stop being used. And they were sitting dormant. And I'm trying to, this whole year, I've been trying to clean stuff up. And these are some of those loose ends that have been, so it's been sitting there. And I can't, I mean, I can provide even more documentation. If you mask and all, you could come into the office and I can show you what I've got. But there's nothing that I can trace back and says that this money belongs to the town of Rockingham and shouldn't be going back in, because if it was part of the school program, school lunch program, and for all the expenditures that were going out of the same account, and all the revenue that was coming in the same way it does now, it should be treated the same.
Priscilla, do you have a follow up?
Yes, I'm just still not sure that we should go ahead and do that without it being approved through the Rockingham Board. I think this question needs to go to the Rockingham Board. I don't think the WNESU should be removing Rockingham funds to the WNESU. I think Rockingham should be the one, or it has to come up at their board meeting with a full discussion so that we're sure that it's handled correctly. Because otherwise, you're taking funds away from another district. We are. And I'm not sure that we should be doing that without them, or me, and the other board members, the other four of us, you know, voting that we should do this. It may be the bottom line, this is what needs to happen. But what I'm questioning is doing it at this meeting rather than at, we have a meeting on the 21st. It could be brought up then.
Thank you, Priscilla. Are there other questions or comments from the board? Okay, I'm going to make a suggestion here for a motion. And if there's a member that is comfortable making it, at least for the purposes of discussion, I would like to get that. And what I would propose for a motion would be to move the food service account to Community Bank with the proviso that the auditors shall confirm the final balances.
A move for discussion.
Thank you, Deb. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And I see also I had a second from Lynn, you're a little bit in the dark. So I'm going to give the second to Lynn, if that's okay. So Deb has moved.
I want to add an amendment.
And Lynn has seconded. And Priscilla, I see your hand up for an amendment, so let's have it.
Yes, I'd like to amend it to go back to the Rockingham Board for confirmation prior to this board confirming it.
Well, I'm going to rule your amendment to be out of order, because I believe that it is not germane to the motion itself. Of course, I realize that members of this board may have a different opinion. So I'm going to seek, seek the, the board's sentiment as to whether they think that the amendment is germane. And Priscilla, I'm going to start with you, obviously. I'm going to presume that you are a yes, that the motion is germane.
Yes.
Okay. And Jason Terry, how do you vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Do we have a third, oh, Rick Holloway, good, I do see you here now. Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Lynn Morgan? I believe you muted Lynn.
What does germane mean?
Germane means that the, that the amendment is appropriate to the motion. And example might be that a motion would be to take the Fourth of July off, but the motion were amended to take Christmas off. If you're discussing the Fourth of July, an amendment on Christmas probably would not be germane to that motion.
Okay, okay. I'm going to say yes.
Okay. Cheryl Charles?
I vote yes in support of the amendment.
Okay. I can tell you right now that the amendment will carry. Unless there's, unless there are any members that would like to register a no, then we will go back to the amended motion now.
I would like to do that.
Okay, you would like to register a no, Deb?
I'd like to register a no with a reason. The reason is that all financial transactions occur through the same offices that you're trying to discuss. Finance Office handles all the transactions for Rockingham School as well as the greater WNESU. They're already aware of those factors. And you're asking, you're going to redundantly ask them again to go back over the numbers that they just went over, that Teresa has listed, and say, we don't agree with you. We want you to dig again and see if you can find a difference that would make the money Rockingham's as opposed to the SU's. That's my disagreement.
Okay, thank you, Deb. Is there anyone else wishing to register a no before we go back to the amended motion? Okay, the, the motion was to move to the food service account with Community Bank, the $71,000, which is now in the Rockingham food account, and with the proviso that the auditors shall confirm the final balances. Priscilla, can we have your amendment on top of that? And I think we'd be ready to move right to a vote.
After it is approved through the Rockingham Board, since it is Rockingham funds.
Okay, so then the motion would be after it is approved by the Rockingham Board.
Since it is currently Rockingham funds in their general, in their general fund.
Okay. After it is approved by the Rockingham Board, the funds will be moved to the food service account with Community Bank with the proviso that the auditors shall confirm the final balances. Does everybody have that motion in mind? All right. Are there, is there any additional question or comment? All right, then I'm going to roll call.
David?
Yes.
Can I say something? I just want to, I know Priscilla just said, and whether it's a technicality or not, I just want to.
Teresa, I mistook you for Lynn. I apologize.
Sorry. I, I was going to say, whether this is technicality or not, I just want to be clear that based on what Priscilla just stated a second ago, these funds are not sitting in Rockingham School District's general fund. They're not in the general fund. They're sitting in their own separate bank account.
Thank you for the clarification.
But they're part of the general fund.
Molly, do I have your hand, Molly, or was that just an adjustment?
No, I don't. I'd like to, I got just a couple, you know, I've listened to this. And Teresa just kind of cleared it up for me. It was that money, and somebody tell me I'm wrong, but that money, I understand, was in the food service account that maybe was dubbed as Rockingham. But the food services run out of the SU office now and has been for, what, a couple of years?
Quite a while.
And so we have this lump sum of money that's in this account that is part of food service. It's not in Rockingham's general fund. It was maybe part of Rockingham's, part of their food service, no different than Raffin or Westminster or anybody else. But it's, it's food service money, isn't it?
Mr. Chair? Yes, yes, Mr. Breyer. If you have a point of order or a clarification, make it. Otherwise, I can move back to Priscilla for a pardon.
Quick clarification. I think we covered this the last time. At one point, the SU couldn't own assets. And so in order to run the food service program, it was essentially set up as an account, and it was set up as an account under Rockingham. But it was, that's because it could have been just as easily set up under Westminster or anybody else. If we buy, buy a new building for the SU, it'll be under a, one of the member districts' accounts. But it won't mean that that member district essentially owns the building. It's the same kind of thing. And we used to have a statement right in the, right in the, right in the auditor reports from past years about this. So it should show up pretty quickly.
Thank you, Jack. We're going to go, we're going to go back to the amended motion, which is that after it is determined by Rockingham Board that the accounts are in order, those funds, the food service account will be moved to Community Bank once again with proviso that the auditors shall confirm the final balances. Do I have you correctly, Priscilla? I pick you on mute, Priscilla.
Once Rockingham goes through their numbers, then it may be clear. But right now, I think if you take it away from the Rockingham Board, you're, you're really looking at, at least my feeling, like possibly things haven't been done correctly. So I just really feel strongly that, that, and it may very well prove that that's exactly where. But I don't think it's been shown at this point. So yes.
Well, your motion, pardon, your amendment, Priscilla, was clearly supported by a majority of this board. I would anticipate that, given that fact, that the board is likely to approve the motion. So unless there are any other objections, I would like to move to a vote. Are there any objections? I'm not seeing any. Lynn, Lynn Morgan?
I have one question. But it would not, okay, never mind. Never mind, just go ahead.
Okay.
I'm interrupting.
Lynn Morgan, do you vote yes on this motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Rick Holloway?
Yes.
Thank you. Brenda Farkas?
Yes.
Thank you. Priscilla?
Yes.
Great. Cheryl Charles?
Yes.
Jessa?
Yes.
Jason Terry?
Yes.
And Deb?
No.
Hey, well, the motion is supported by a majority of the board. Thank you all for that. Let's move on to, we've already covered item B, the timetable for the audit. We're down to item C, which is Harley Sterling's request for extra stipend for food service workers during school closure. Chris, who will handle this one for admin? Would you unmute, please, Chris?
Sorry about that. Yes, I think Harley Sterling, Director of Food Services, wants to address the board in regards to the stipends, Mr. Chair.
Harley, you're on.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I am here to restate my letter requesting the board's blessing to pay our seven most essential workers who work the most hours during the school closure, a retroactive wage increase of $2.75 per hour effective from the March 23rd, beginning of school closure, through the end of the year, June 12th. And my total ask is for $7,986 so that we can pay each of them this stipend based on the hours they worked. And to clarify, this is for the seven workers who work more than 24 hours each week.
Okay, thank you, Harley. I'm going to muddy the waters here just a little bit with you, Harley. And that is that item D is report on the cost of food versus the reimbursement from the government for universal free meals during school closure. I think that the board may wish to have a handle on how the, the expenses and revenues actually sugared off before they can consider your request. I think without having that context, it's difficult, it's a difficult ask to sustain. So Chris Pratt, who would, who would speak to this?
Harley has all the numbers in regards to the additional revenues that came out of the school closure and the meals that were being provided. I know he's gone over with me a few times. And that's one of the reasons why, you know, the revenues is, makes a difference in regards to what he's requesting. So I'm going to defer to him on this. And he can share with you what he's shared with me in the past.
Harley, can you tell us how the numbers sugared off?
I sure can. Am I able to share my screen? Or can I share a document with you that you can share?
Yeah, why don't you send it to me and I'll call it up?
Okay, I did send it to you about five minutes ago, Mr. Pratt.
Okay.
So while we're pulling that up, I can speak briefly to what is different about the program during the school closure. Namely, that meals were free for all children 18 and under, regardless of enrollment. And the other major difference, well, the way that was possible was through waivers granted by the state so that we could operate as a summer food service program. So essentially, as soon as schools closed, it was treated like we are running a summer food service program. And one of the key differences is reimbursement rates, which are slightly higher during the summer compared to the regular national school lunch program and national school breakfast program reimbursement rates that are applied during the year. So I have, can everyone hear me okay still?
You're good, Harley.
Okay. So I requested detailed product purchase history information from each of our vendors. And I tallied them myself here for the, for the period of March 23rd through, through July 2nd into this executive summary. And so here under expenses, I have each of our major food vendors. Well, this is actually all of our vendors. And shows how much we ordered from them during that time. And I made a few notes about the additional expenses that were incurred due to the, the situation where we had to switch to unitized grab and go meals. So essentially, during the school year, we have things like salad bars. And we operate what's called offer versus serve, where students can choose components they want. And they don't necessarily have to have all five components that make up a reimbursable meal. And that's different when you're sending a meal to go. You have to give them all five components. And you obviously still have to, you have to package it. So I estimate that the disposables that, the new disposables that we were required to purchase made up about 15% of our total expenditures. And then I also think it's fair to say that it's pretty close to another 15% increased cost when you're doing the unitized meals versus offer versus serve, where a kid could just take three out of the five components instead of all five, meaning there's a, there's a higher upfront cost for serving these meals. So that's just a little information about the, the key differences. But as you can see, our total expenses during that time period were $229,984.84. On the right, I estimated our local food purchasing. Out of all of that, out of the food only expenses, we spent $18,000 at Thomas Dairy, $17,000 at our local food hub. And we bought many local products from our other vendors. And I estimate we spent about 25% of our total food budget on local products, which I think is really impressive, given the circumstances. And so then down at the bottom, I have our, our tally of the claims, the consolidated totals of. our tally of the claims, the consolidated totals of our meal claims to the state during that time period. This is our meal totals for March 23rd through June 30th, where we served 116,530 child meals for a total reimbursement of $373,478.65. Additionally, we had a contract, um, with DCF through the state of Vermont to provide meals, through their emergency, emergency shelter program, where they were housing homeless individuals in hotels and motels throughout the state. And they contracted us to, to provide them with additional meals. So that was probably another 10, closer to 15,000 meals for a total, total revenue during that time period of 426,478.
David?
Yes, Deb?
Or Harley, can we ask a question?
Sure.
Where, um, has Teresa verified those numbers?
Well, I don't know. These are based on the claims that Shawna and I are processing. So all of the claim, all of the tally sheets, the daily tally sheets are in. And, um, so the revenue numbers are not going to change. They're very solid. And like I said, the expenses haven't exactly been verified, but they're based on the most detailed information I can gather, uh, with every single invoice from every single one of our vendors. So I'm confident that these numbers are, as accurate as I can possibly make them.
Okay, Harley, what is your, uh, net of income less expenses then?
I estimate our, um, our share of the yearly budget of labor during the, the, I estimate our labor expenses around $125,000. The reason it gets a little tricky is because it depends on what exact window we're looking at. Whether we're looking at, um, the school closure period being the same window as the stipend period that I'm asking for, which is March 23rd to June 12th. It gets a little interesting just because people had different contract dates where our food service staff contracts didn't technically end on June 12th. So it really has to do with where, where you take the snapshot. But if you take a weekly sum of our labor expenses and you multiply it by the, the 14 weeks in question, it's, it's around $125,000.
What's gonna be difficult for this board, Harley, is understanding clearly what your, uh, net revenue picture looks like for the fiscal year that ends, ended on June 30. And I think, I think that you, your board really is gonna need to understand that before it can act, um, on the request for the additional stipends. I of course have the sense that you have the money, but I think that as stewards of the public trust, we have an obligation to, um, know what the numbers look like.
Sure, I understand that. I would like, uh, I'd like the official numbers as well.
What does the board wanna do here?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jason. And Chris, could you pull the, uh, can you pull this? Thank you. Go ahead, Jason.
Can actually, can you put that back for a second?
Oh, then put it back. Sorry, Chris.
So actually, who, who's, who typed in the labor there?
I'm making notes for myself as we go.
Oh. I just spelled expenses wrong. So Harley, my, my question is, this, this is good. I, I think this is a good start and I'd be willing to help you with any of this going forward. I, I think what I, what I'd like to see is this prior to a meeting so that we can kinda digest it and review it. And then we can have our questions written, if at all possible going forward. And again, this is a good start. Also, I'd like to, what I'm seeing so far is it looks like your food cost was 25% of your net revenue. Am I following that so far?
Uh, no, higher than that. Our food cost would be all of our expenses that weren't packaging and, um, supply and equipment, so.
So, so if it's, is it the 229 plus the 195?
Uh, 195 is, 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 uh, the food cost approximately, food only expense total.
And then, so then you would divide that by your revenue of 426, right?
Yes.
Seven, three, two, four, six. All right, so you're at a 46% food cost and that does not include any waste. How does that get tracked with, um, the, the system that we have at the school system?
Wasted food?
Yeah, like, like you're, actually, nobody picks up, you throw it in the garbage.
Well, all of our meals are produced based on people ordering them, um, so.
So nothing gets wasted at the end of the day?
Food does get wasted, but, um, you know, if people sign up to pick up and they don't show up one day, I mean, it's, it's a variable thing and it's, it's, I mean, I'll have to double check what the, whether those are.
So if your food cost is at a 46 and then if, if I'm right, your labor is 125,000, divide that by the 426, that's it. That's 29% plus your 48%, you're at 77%. Plus, let's say waste is 5%, they're at 82%. And then, you know, it's plus, some other things are plus in there and probably some negatives. So I'm just trying to, for me personally, and I, I just wanna make sure that we, um, have maybe the data beforehand. I, I think this is good. I think you did a great job with this. And I think you and all your team is doing a great job. But that's not my question. I just wanna be able to, uh, as a steward for the town and the community, I wanna be able to, you know, make good decisions as best I can. So your work, your work and what you're doing is not in question at all. 100%, I just wanna make sure that we're, I don't know, profitable. So those are my questions.
Other questions from the board?
David?
Yes, Deb?
Debbie. So I agree with Jason Terry. In order for boy make informed decisions, we need to have the information prior. I would prefer that the information was verified through the finance office to be sure we're on the money about this. I would like to know how many employees we're talking about that you're looking to get $2.50 more per hour for out of the $89,28.57 a week it costs for payroll. That would be something I need, we would need to know. It makes sense on what the impact will be when we're done. So, and so ask and something we would need in advance.
Jason, I have your hand and I'm going, when you get done, I'm gonna ask if either you or Deb would consider making a motion to table this request and also see Priscilla's hand up.
I, I think, I just wanted to answer Deb. I think what Harley mentioned was it's 7,986 and there were seven employees. And for me, my math, that's 1141 per person that we're looking to give. Is that correct, Harley?
It's a variable on a sliding scale based on how many hours they were scheduled to work. So I have all of that in a spreadsheet, but, you know, the, just taking a step back to where this request came from.
Hold on a minute here, Harley. I realize that, um, you would like to give us more information. I have a clear sense that the board is not going to take action on this tonight. I would like to recognize Priscilla Lambert who has her hand up. But what I would like to do would be get a motion to table to the next meeting.
Table, David, there's no motion on the floor.
Okay. All right.
Not yet.
Is there any objection then to enabling action on this until the regular?
No motion. Can I ask my questions?
Yes, Priscilla.
We don't need to table, there's no motion. So that, we're just getting preliminary stuff, so it won't matter. We can take it up next time. But anyway, um, we wanna know how this, I would like to know, um, he talked about only seven most essential workers. And what about the others? Where, what, what did they work? What are we talking about? I'd like to know how the salaries compare to other support staff. For example, the payers contract, they get a dollar for exposure to bodily fluids. Um, and there was no bodily fluids that these would have been exposed to. And there was no coronavirus that they were exposed to. So, um, kinda, cause there's none in our district. So, um, you know, we need to have more reasons.
Okay, hold on, hold on here a minute, Priscilla. You've just confirmed that, uh, the chair can table action here. I appreciate the fact that there are additional questions which we would like to have answers to. I'm gonna ask the board and members of the public, if members of the public are interested in, uh, weighing in on this, that you get those questions into the WNESU office. You can send them to me, david.clark@wnesu. Personally, I would prefer that they, uh, went into the business office or the superintendent of schools. But we're not gonna answer these questions tonight. And I'm hopeful that when we meet again later in the month, that we can have all of the questions in advance with the answers and then the board can make an informed decision. So, um, Harley, thank you very much for being here. Uh, we have covered our report on reimbursement. We have a 3E, which is business, business office investigation update. I believe that this is a legal matter because we do have counsel involved in investigating it. So it's my intent to move this to an executive session at the end of the meeting. And that would bring us down to item four, new business for discussion action. Preparations for the starter school in August, including the results of the surveys sent home. Chris, I think this would be your item. And if you would unmute, sir, that would be very helpful.
Thank you, David. So getting into the opening of school, as you all know, we'll have our first reopening task force tomorrow at 11 o'clock. On that task force, we have administrators, teachers, directors. The two board member representatives for the board would be Priscilla Lambert and Colin James. So, um, during this meeting, what we'll be doing is, is that we'll be, really looking at the process of what it would look like in schools when we reopen, um, the schools for students and staff. Meaning that we have to have safety procedures in place. We have to have screening in place. We have to follow everything that the state has laid out report that, um, most of you have, have reviewed. And so this does not mean that we'd be looking at how are we going to educate kids in the building? It's more or less, we have to come up with a plan to make sure that we've taken everything into consideration as much as possible to make sure that we are keeping kids, families, teachers, employees safe. That meeting will take place, um, tomorrow at 11 o'clock. We hope to be able to report out more to the board and, and put another update out to the community as I did last week. And just to keep everyone informed in what's going on. It continues to, it continues the change. I wouldn't say so much right now, based on the June 17th, that report that was sent out by the state. But, you know, there is an anticipation that, um, you know, other factors will continue to be looked at as we get closer to the school year. So I would, what I'm asking is if any board members, you do have questions or things that you want to bring up, I would say please send them to Priscilla or Colin James so they can bring them to the task force meeting and bring those concerns, questions of what you, you know, what you have to the team. So we can all listen together. Like I said, this probably close to 30 people on this task force to take a look at, you know, everything from transportation, what we do, you know, how we keep kids safe at bus stops, what we do for visitors in the building. So there's many different levels here. We're, we're at the same pace and this, on the same course in getting things done as most other SUs in the area. And so we're, we're hoping to have, you know, things rolled out and ready to go by the end of July and sharing that information with the parents. I'm doing, um, what we're trying to do is really put it in a user friendly format, very similar to the one you saw for the SU office and those procedures. And it's something that we're gonna have to continue to revisit and spiral back to make sure that, um, as we get closer to the school, even when the school's open, that we're constantly adjusting and modifying the plan that we have in place. We're hoping that we think of everything, but there's no guarantees that other stuff won't come up and there won't be stuff that we, we did not anticipate. So, you know, that's where we are right now in regards to the, um, reopening of schools in, in the fall.
Thank you, Chris. Questions from the board, Jack Brier?
Yes, just one. I appreciate all the work that's being done here. But with 30 people on the board, I was wondering if, or this committee, if it'd be possible to put a, a board member from Westminster Athens and Grafton School District? Cause I think we have some peculiar circumstances that would really merit inclusion. And I haven't talked to Lynn or to Cheryl or to Jessa, but I would like to stick one of them on you. I think they would add measurably to the process of certainly, Cheryl has pretty deep educational, uh, roots and, uh, I think would be of value, uh, to, to your, uh, to, to the group. And, uh, I would encourage you to, to reach out to one of these folks and ask them to, uh, participate. I think it'd be better for it.
Response, uh, Chris?
Yeah, I, I feel that's, that's a very reasonable request. You know, we have Priscilla from Rockingham, we have Colin, I can cover the, you know, the, the high school piece. So I would ask that the board chairs from the other boards who do not have representation now, speak to your board members and anyone who's interested, to, to send me an email and I can share the information, the links and everything else with them.
Yeah. Sit right here in front of me in the living room looking at the one of the jacks is underneath the stripper bar.
There's a question.
Just a moment. We have, we have an unmuted conversation in the background. I don't know whose that is, but if you could mute it, that'd be helpful. Pardon me, Jason Terry had his hand up. So Jason, I'm gonna recognize you and then I'll go around again.
I could, uh, wait for Jessa to go.
Jessa?
I'm just wondering if the committee meeting on Zoom, is that put on the website for tomorrow?
No, it's not because it's not, it's, it's not an open meeting for, to the community.
Okay.
All right, Jason.
Chris, who, um, so we, we email Colin and Priscilla our questions of what we want them to bring up?
Right now, those are the two reps you have. So yes, if we add other reps, so right now for, um, like Rockingham, you could say Priscilla, the high school would be Colin and then other board chairs could assign, um, representation from their boards to be on the committee. And I would suggest, urge that that would be the process that we use to submit your questions to is through your board rep.
Okay, thank you. And I, just lastly, um, I can't remember what it is. Can I, back to that, I apologize.
Additional questions or comment from the board? Molly, did you have your hand up?
Yes, good.
Deb, right?
Okay, um, I, I'll be quick. My concern here is if you actually appoint additional members from the NES, ESU, then you will make it a meeting and you will need to warn all of the meetings and provide information for the public to attend, to attend. So I would prefer just to keep it to a couple of members in order to perform. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Jason, Terry?
Sorry, I remembered my question. I just really would, as you're doing your meetings, uh, Mr. Pratt and Priscilla, I really think it's a good idea to practice prior to school opening. Only because it's not gonna be perfect when we open. You know, we're gonna have to answer questions like what's gonna be our threshold for paying? Meaning, what are we gonna allow for? You know, that's not gonna be perfect. It's not gonna be perfect. It's gonna be bumpy, so practice. It's not going to be perfect. It's going to be bumpy. So practice makes perfect. So that's just my thing. Thank you.
The others, before we move on? All right then, we're down to 4B, which is resignations. Chris?
I don't have any formal resignation that the board has to approve. I think it's worth saying that Stanley Butzick, who is the current transportation coordinator, is retiring at the end of the month. And so we have, you know, so that he is resigning. It's not anything that the board has to approve, but I did want you to be aware.
Thank you, Chris. That's a pretty good lead in to 4C, which is Transportation Coordinator Update. What do you have for us on that, Chris?
So the new transportation coordinator that will be taking over Stanley for Stanley on July 20th will be Jennifer Rose. Jennifer Rose is currently currently a driver for us and has done an excellent job. If you recall, Jennifer presented to the board some time back in regards to wanting to make improvements and suggestions in creating a more sustainable and more appealing transportation office. So she will be taken over for Stanley on the 20th.
Thank you, Chris. Would it be possible for you to invite Jennifer to our SU board meeting when we meet again at the end of the month? Just for introductions to the board, we'll put her up close to the beginning so she doesn't have to wait through it the way Stanley did sometimes. Absolutely. Okay, thank you. All right, we we do have an update on the Business Office Investigation coming up. Oh, sure, Priscilla, your question, please.
Does that mean since since Stanley's resignation was effective the end of August, does that mean that there will be, we'll be paying both of them from July 20th till the end of August for that position? To to, and I would assume that's overlap, but that might be needed, but that's the question.
Yes, there'll be there'll be overlap for training, so she has time to work with Stanley in the office.
Jessa, I have your hand.
I'm just wondering how we're doing hiring drivers.
At this point, I couldn't is going in regards to fill in that position.
Can we expect an update?
I'm sorry.
Can we expect an update on the status of drivers at the next meeting, Chris?
Yeah, like I said, we're down one driver. I can give an update in regards to whether or not that position will be filled. Stanley has agreed also to to stick around if we need a driver as well. So we'll still, we'll be able to utilize him as well.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else here before we move on to director's comments? Priscilla, why don't you start us off tonight?
Let me go later.
How about you, Rick? Rick Holloway? You're still here? Are you still with us, Rick? If you are, you can come back later. Molly? Nothing, okay. Steve Fine, I see that you are in attendance tonight. Do you have a director's comment?
I do not.
Thank you for being here. How about you, Deb?
Only to say that that the Rockingham Rec is open for swimming and people can get involved in some of that. Get also some a movie, I think they're doing once a week on the wall screens and outdoor film. Some other things that are trying to make our summer a little better. And the Rockingham Opera House is working on finding a way to do some form of movie in the near future. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Jason Benson, you're with us tonight. Do you have any comment? I'll let you come back with that comment. Are you here, Jason?
Yeah, I'm here. He's muted. But no, no, I do not have any comments tonight.
Well, thank you for being here. How about Jason Terry?
Uh, yeah, just wanted to mention that the Bowls Falls High School was built for over 800 students. We currently have about 300 students. So social distancing should not be a problem when we open it. And looking at the survey, the survey, I think we could do much better. And I think there's a lot of concerns out there with the percentages. And there's, you know, page six, my child misses their extracurriculars, 88% of our children miss extracurriculars. So I think we definitely want to, you know, look at that coming up very, very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Lynn?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Brenda?
Now, I'm pretty much all set, but I do want to thank you for that survey information. It was very interesting.
Thank you, Brenda. Jessa? Priscilla, you have a comment?
Already. Yes, since I'm a little disappointed that we still don't have that audit report because we are now at the end of this school year. It just ended the end of June and so now we're going to be in need of another audit report for that year. But also on a night, an upward trend, BP Penn spoke length at length today about the school openings this fall and that all schools should be open and that we can do this. So I know our committee is going to be able to to do that tomorrow and look at it really, really thoroughly and be able to set up plans for that. The CDC's recommendations bothered me when they came out with them. But today it was pointed out that those were only requirements. I know our state is looking at those as well. But those were not requirements. They were only recommendations. I said that wrong. But our state has put some things in there for us to use as guidelines and I have faith in the committee that they can do this.
Thank you, Priscilla. Cheryl Charles?
Oh, thank you. I would say about the school reopening that I am among those who actually is pretty immersed in thinking about that and have been thinking with colleagues of every level from local to national to international about how it can be done safely. And with a real commitment to the health and well-being and the flourishing, quite honestly, of children in every respect with the reopening. So I will send some comments to Priscilla and to Colin. I heard Deborah's comment about not wanting to have another school board member on the committee, which would then move it into the business of having a quorum and therefore potentially needing, not potentially, but would be requiring an official warning of all those meetings. So just let me say for the record that I will be sending some suggestions and will be very eager to be of any help that I can be in this whole in this whole process. All of us care about a safe reopening and we're and we're committed to children's academic achievement, their social well-being, their reduction in anxiety. Everything about all of this is just so critically important and it's not easy. So, you know, let's do what we can, all of us together to have this be a successful and safe reopening. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Well, this is my comment.
I'll call now, Mr. Clark.
Oh, you're ready, Rick? Go ahead.
Yeah, I had a mouthful of food when you called on me before, you know, the nice thing about Zoom meetings is you can eat and eat and meat at the same time, usually.
I like your tie.
So I wanted to follow up on some of this, on some of this, the for some, give a little bit of opinion to the to the committee that's opening up. I'm probably on the more cautious side than some folks. But I do want to point out that a lot of the guidelines and stuff that you read say should. They do not say have to. They do not say must. They do not say required. There's a lot of the things in there that say should. And I think that's a term that the committee should keep an eye on when they're looking at what we what we can do because saying that you should do something doesn't mean that you must do something.
Anything else, Rick?
No, that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you for that. I I have been counting the numbers here and I believe that currently we have two board members on the committee, those being Colin and Priscilla. Is there a third, Chris?
Oh, just those two as a.
Well, in that case, I I believe we could probably accommodate Jack's request for a member from the Union Elementary because Colin is is certainly not a voting member of the WNESU board. And even if he were, we would still be comfortably below WNESU Board Quorum, which is five. And and that's my comment. And Jack, I've saved you for last, so you're up. You you are here, aren't you, Jack? Somewhere? Oh, my goodness. Did I lose you, Jack?
I don't think Jack's with us any longer. I mean, with us in this meeting.
Yes. Thank you for the. Okay, then, having no other members who have not offered their comments, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of a legal matter, which is an update on the Business Office Investigation. They have a motion, please.
So moved?
Thank you, Deb. Do I have a second? Okay, that was you, Lynn?
Yes.
Thank you, Lynn. All right. All those in favor, I'm going to roll call you. Lynn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Thank you. Jessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Jason Terry?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Deb?
Aye.
Okay.